Well, good evening, everyone. Forgive us for our somewhat late start this evening. We were in executive session. I want to take a roll call and Mr. Bendel, myself, Mr. Kira, Mr. Loud are present. You will notice that Mr. McCoy is still not with us. He is home convalescing and healing from his surgery. And I know that my colleagues join me in expressing to Mr. McCoy our wishes for your complete and full recovery, and we hope you're feeling better soon. We look forward to having you back here as soon as you can. So, as I mentioned, we were in executive session for purposes of discussing strategy with respect to litigation for the high school gymnasium and to approve some executive session minutes from specific dates, August 13th, 2013, September 23rd, 2013, September 27th, 2013, September 22nd, 2014, and July 17th, 2017. Again, those were executive session minutes that were being reviewed and ultimately, at some point, will achieve acceptance. And those are all in accordance with general law, Chapter 38, Section 22. So, that said, if I could ask all present in the room to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple sets of Treasury warrants to transmit and approve, 28, 28A, 29, and 29A. Do I have a motion?
No.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on any of those Treasury warrants? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We do have some open session minutes to discuss or approve. They are from September 25th of 2017 and January 8th of 2018. I'll take them up individually, September 25th of 2017.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes from September 25th, 2017.
Accept that made motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on that? Very well, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. The minutes of January 8th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on anything there? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Which brings us to our scheduled seven o'clock appointment. Again, apologize for the late start with Jamie McGoldy. What is PEMCA DPW Operations Manager? Jamie?
Glad you asked that, because my second slide will go into all that.
Excellent. We're glad to have you here, Operations Manager. And Cheryl, hello Cheryl Sessa from Analog Devices, Services Manager at Analog Devices with regards to a Wilmington grant for tree planting. So Jamie, we're going to, I don't know, Jeff, do you want to do an intro, or should we go right to Jamie?
I think you go to Jamie.
All right, Jamie, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Of course, you all know me, my name is Jamie McGoldy. I'm the Operations Manager and Tree Warden for the town of Wilmington. Several weeks ago, the town manager asked the DPW to investigate some potential environmental projects. We did learn that Analog Devices was graciously donating an amount of $5,000 to the town for an environmental project. We were very excited about it. And so the DPW went back and decided to do some research on what would be a good environmental project. And I think, you know, in this green age, it's easy to kind of get wrapped up in current technology. There's all sorts of great project options out there, such as solar panels, high-efficiency lighting. But sometimes we forget to really get back to basics. And really, the most basic and simple way to provide an environmental project is really a basic tree planting. I'd like to take this opportunity to kind of go into what makes tree planting an environmental project and kind of our proposal with what we'd like to do with the donation. A little bit of background about myself, as Mr. Shampoo had so eloquently asked. Actually, I was raised in Wilmington, attended Wilmington High School, class of 1997, believe it or not. And from there, I went to Merrimack College and earned a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. Shortly thereafter, I became a Registered Professional Engineer, which is what PE stands for, in the state of Massachusetts. And I'm also a Massachusetts Certified Arborist, which is what the MCA stands for. And as a side note, just so you know, there are only two people in the entire state that have both of these designations, and you're talking to one of them right now. My father's probably watching this from home right now, and I wanted to make sure, since he paid for my education, we gave him something to be proud of. I just recently finished a three-year appointment on the Mass Tree Wardens and Forests Association. I'm also a Certified Pesticide Applicator, certified in Categories 40, which is Rights of Way, and also Category 36, which is Shade Tree. And I'm very proud to say, just as recent as this past December, I was published nationally in TCIA Magazine, which is Tree Care Industry Association, for an article that correlates the profession of civil engineering to the profession of arboriculture and how we're having a real tough time recruiting young professionals to the career of arboriculture. But on a more broad scale, the DPW is a member of the Mass Tree Wardens and Forests Association, Mass Arborists Association, Society of Municipal Arborists, and of course, APWA, American Public Works Association. And, you know, through our continuing education and networking, we're able to bring back some great information, not only on the state level, but also nationwide, and great ideas back to the town of Wilmington. Now, there's been a lot that's happened nationwide, and we are able to bring those successes back here. And at the same time, projects that may have failed, we're able to kind of network and make sure we don't make the same mistakes twice. Always willing to provide ideas that are in the best interest of the town. So, is planting a tree an environmental project? Of course it is. There are certain quantifiable benefits associated with planting trees. I'd like to get into those a little bit tonight. The three main ones are air quality improvements and carbon dioxide reduction, energy conservation benefits and heat island reduction, and stormwater benefits. And there's some ancillary benefits, such as property values. There's been hundreds of case studies of research proving that property values will increase with tree plantings. And also, at the same time, this has been proven that there are psychological benefits to tree plantings that actually increases moods and provides a great boost in the economy if they're planted in commercial areas. So, planting is certainly a long-term environmental investment. So what this is, is a calculator, which is available online from the USDA Forest Service in correlation with Casey Tree and David Tree Experts. And you're able to actually pick a theoretical tree and plant it anywhere in Wilmington and determine what the annual benefits would be. So this theoretical case study is an eight-inch diameter maple tree planted in Wilmington, and it provides the annual benefit of approximately $64 a year. Now, granted, these are broad strokes and generalizations, but it gives you a general idea of what a tree that size could return in investment. And this is broken out into just what I said before, stormwater benefits, property value, electricity, natural gas reduction, and air quality. So let's start with the carbon dioxide first. We all know that trees create oxygen for us, right? Then how does that happen? It happens through the process of photosynthesis, when the sun actually strips the carbon atom right out of that carbon dioxide compound, and it holds it in the tree, it sequesters it in the tree. The vast majority of a substance of a tree is carbon. So the theoretical physicist Richard Feynman said, "Trees don't grow out of the ground, they grow out of the air." So in a sense, he's right. And then, of course, that process can be reversed. When you burn a piece of wood in a fireplace, you're actually combining those two atoms again and sending out the carbon dioxide. So, in a sense, log stores sunlight. But the takeaway here is that they're stripping that carbon right out of the carbon dioxide compound. So how much carbon is reduced by a planting? Well, our theoretical case study tree, the eight-inch maple, will reduce atmospheric carbon by about 205 pounds. And here, the blue bar is the sequestered carbon that's actually locked up in the tree, creating the substance of the tree. And the green bar is the amount of carbon avoided by reducing energy spent on heating and cooling. So as you know, if you plant trees in the right spot in the winter, they're going to provide a windbreak for you. If you plant them in the right spot in the summer, they're going to help shade your house and reduce the amount of energy that you're using on air conditioning. And just as a point of comparison, the average sedan generates about 11,000 pounds of carbon dioxide per year. So it's baby steps here, but you get the idea. The more trees you plant, the bigger they become, and these benefits grow with time. Some additional air quality benefits of this case study tree. The eight-inch maple will intercept or reduce the pollutants as shown in the graph behind me. And that includes ozone, volatile organic compounds, also known as VOCs, nitrogen dioxide, sulfur dioxide, and particulate matter. Particulate matter would be any sort of dust particle in the air or any sort of floating sand or particles. The tree actually acts as a filter and removes that. And again, these values are derived by reducing the reliance on heating and cooling in the first place. Which leads us to home energy benefits. Our eight-inch maple will conserve about 35 kilowatts of electricity for cooling and reduce consumption of oil and natural gas by about 16 therms. Again, you plant the tree in the right spot in your yard, you're going to create a windbreak and minimize the chance that that winter wind is going to whip through your house. So you're going to be saving on heat. And at the same time, of course, you can shade your home and reduce the amount of air conditioning you're going to use. Trees also transpire. And what that is, is the process of running water up the tree during its natural process. It'll actually send water vapor out the leaves and help cool the air, which will in turn reduce heat island effect as well. Moving on to stormwater benefits, our theoretical eight-inch maple wants to intercept about 515 gallons of stormwater runoff per year. Trees act as mini reservoirs, actually. So that tree is literally intercepting water as it's falling on it, mostly by the root system as it's using the water to help the tree grow. The root system also acts as soil erosion control and stores water, increases infiltration and reduces stormwater runoff as well. So I'd like to take this opportunity to issue a thank you to Analog for the $5,000 donation. The grant will certainly be used toward the planting of several new trees throughout Wilmington in high-profile areas of town. This will happen as soon as mid to late April of this year. The locations will include arterial roadways, parks, school grounds, and the Wildwood Cemetery. Most notably, along Church Street, we have an extra-wide grass strip. And over the last 15 to 20 years, we've lost a lot of silver maple trees in that strip. We'd like to restore them and maybe help shade the road again. And the best part is, the species will be site specifically selected from the DPW's annual bid tree planting list. Last fiscal year, we were thinking ahead, and every so often, we come across state grants or donations such as this, which will allow us to simply pick up the phone and call the planter and have them planted. So they're already pre-bid. We have a pre-bid, pre-selected list that we can all already choose from. That's essentially it as far as tree benefits. And again, we'd like to take the opportunity to thank Analog Devices.
Thank you, Jamie. It's good stuff. It's interesting content there and a lot of stuff. Some of it I may have learned 40 years ago in high school or wherever, but it's just fascinating to sort of relearn some of that stuff and be exposed to some of it for the first time. I did want to take the opportunity to say hello to our friends from Analog who are in the room, so I don't want to spot you there. But Cheryl, would you, I know you're here with a colleague, so we'd like to sort of turn it over to you and maybe tell us a little bit more about what this program is and how it came about and just have a word, if you don't mind.
My name is Cheryl Sessa. I'm the Site Services Manager at Analog Devices. Marlene Moran works at Analog and has been very involved with the town of Wilmington. So we're a part of the Contributions Committee at Analog. In the past, we had given a $10,000 grant a year to the Ipswich River Watershed Association because the Ipswich River begins here in Wilmington. This year, our site manager felt that we should take part of that grant and use it more locally, so he asked me, and with your help, to find a Wilmington green project that could use 5,000 of that. And then we still went ahead and gave 5,000 to the Ipswich River. So I'm thinking it could possibly be an annual grant.
Great. I'm sorry, could you say that louder and just?
Just say "possibly."
Yeah, I know, you qualified. Well, thank you very much. I sincerely mean that, not just for this specific grant, but for your and the company's commitment to really just being a partner in Wilmington. You know, good citizenship, good corporate citizen. So certainly, from my perspective, I was very grateful when, you know, you and I had some contact and I went through Jeff and Jamie got involved and this program came about. So in my personal view, this seems like a completely appropriate type of project to use this very generous contribution from Analog Devices. So I'm emboldened by it. Any questions or comments from the board here? Ed, anything?
I just thank you for Analog Devices stepping up to the plate and being a great community citizen. Thank you.
And Jackson and Mel.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I would thank you as well for your generous gift. But just a question for Jamie. When you, I know you mentioned the Wildwood Cemetery with the, you know, the space over the Wildwood Cemetery. Does it make a lot of sense to put the trees over there? Are we taking up space that we should not be taking up?
Not necessarily taking up space. Actually, we've experienced a couple of the tree losses in that cemetery, so as we're removing them, we would plant them back in the same location.
Okay.
And, you know, the trees that are going in are essentially two-inch diameter trees, so they're much smaller than what was there. So, but we're very aware of what we have to work with, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Greg, Eddie?
Yeah, Jamie, first of all, I just want to thank your dad for his investment in your education, obviously paid off, we're reaping the benefits here. But seriously, thank you. This is great. And to our friends at Analog, Mrs. Sessa and Mrs. Moran, thank you very much. I appreciate this. This is a huge benefit to our environment and our property values, hopefully, and overall look of our town. So thank you very much to all involved.
So I have a very brief little certificate. I'm going to ask you guys to come up, but it reads, Town of Wilmington Certificate of Recognition Presented to Analog Devices Incorporated for their generous grant to the Wilmington Department of Public Works, which will allow the planting of new trees throughout Wilmington, presented this day, January 22nd, 2018, by myself, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of my colleagues here in town. Jamie, you want to join us here as well? Just, I don't know, has anybody got a camera to take a photo of? Sorry, I'm spotting Beverly.
She's prepared.
We're going to go. Come on. Cheryl, thank you very much. Here, you can give a bunch of that and we'll do the. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Marlene. Thanks so much. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Jamie, thanks for the program. You got a lot of stuff.
I'll send you all that information. Okay. Thank you.
So Jamie, next year, $10,000 worth of trees.
Jamie never disappoints with the PowerPoint either. Yeah, PowerPoint, all about the PowerPoint. Our next scheduled appointment is still with Jamie McGoldy, our Operations Manager, with an overview of the Vegetation Management Plan. So Jamie, I don't, Jeff, again, same thing.
Just to preface it, this plan has been in place now for a few years. Early on, when it was first put forward, the board at the time received a brief overview, and we thought that, given there's been new members on the board since its inception, that it would be worthwhile to just, again, present an overview as to why this plan is being put forward and what it does.
Thank you. So again, Jamie, if you, Jeff, just to give us a little intro, if you want to take the ball and run with it.
Sure. Yeah, so I'll put my vegetation management hat on here. Kind of related, but not so much. So as Jeff said, the DPW wanted to briefly inform you on the progress of our ongoing VMP, kind of take a chance to explain what it is. And I think all too often, people see the end result of a DPW project, and it's not very indicative of the amount of, level of effort that goes into it. This particular program is extremely laborious on the administrative end, and essentially, it allows us to get into the rights-of-way roadsides and essentially control weeds. So what the residents see is us mechanically trimming, cutting, and treating for weeds, but this is actually a five-year plan, which took about a year's worth of prep just to get it approved. So I'd like to go into that a little bit. And I won't go into this slide again, other than what's in red here. And what's important here is the Category 40 license, which is a rights-of-way endorsement. Anyone who is involved with a rights-of-way management plan has to have a Category 40 license in order to do the supervision that's required in this plan. So we do have that on staff. So a little bit of background, prior to 2013, the DPW observed an increase in roadside vegetation. Where mechanical methods alone really didn't cut it, no pun intended, I guess. I swear, that wasn't even rehearsed. So we were using string trimmers, also known as weed whackers, our mounted flail mower, which you can see in the bottom right, that's a Bobcat with a mounted mower attached to it, and also hand cutting. In the summer, we're able to hire summer help, and these kids are great at helping us maintain the roadsides with weed whackers. But as you could probably tell, as you maintain your yard at home, it grows back after a couple of weeks. So we don't really have the manpower to do this on a townwide level without a little bit of extra help. So as a result, roadside weeds have greatly impacted intersection site distance, travel lane width, and pedestrian paths throughout Wilmington right of way. So we needed a solution for this. The bottom left picture is what's known as Japanese knotweed. It's an invasive plant. And you'll see it getting thicker and thicker as the years progress. We are able to cut this back, but being invasive, it doesn't have any natural predators, any bugs in this area, or animals that like to eat it. So that's why it's called invasive by definition. So this is one of the plants that we're trying to control. Also, cracks in the sidewalk, it develops a lot of weeds. And just like any other plant growing through a crack, it makes it bigger and bigger, eventually breaking up the sidewalk, so. In an effort to improve the level of service at the time in mitigating roadside vegetation, we submitted a five-year vegetation management plan to the Department of Agricultural Resources, also known as MDAR. And this is required by State Regulation 333 CMR 11 in order to apply EPA-approved herbicides to rights-of-way as part of an integrated annual plan to control weeds. The vast majority of our control is still mechanical and cutting and weed whacking, but there is a small component of herbicide use. And whenever you do that, the law says that you have to comply with 333 CMR 11. I can tell you that there are a lot of cities and towns out there that are spraying in the right of way for poison ivy. They do not have vegetation management plans, and that is illegal. So rest assured, we're doing it by the law, and we do have approvals for everything that we do. The VMP defines target vegetation and sets restrictions for the responsible use of herbicide around sensitive environmental areas. This picture on the right is actually the front page of our approved VMP. It's a five-year plan. There are basically four types of vegetation that this covers, and they are hazard vegetation, that would be any sort of vegetation that creates a hazard. So weeds that are growing at an intersection that would prevent you from seeing to the left or to the right, potentially causing an accident, would be considered hazard vegetation. And that's basically our number one priority as far as our vegetation's concerned. Our second priority would be detrimental vegetation. That would be any sort of vines that's wrapped around a guardrail or weeds in sidewalks that are making them break. So detrimental vegetation would be weeds that are actually creating damage to our infrastructure. Nuisance vegetation is the third, and that's essentially vegetation that just kind of looks unsightly. It might hit you in the face as you walk by, not really a major hazard, but certainly a nuisance. And of course, the fourth one is invasive vegetation. Like I said, with the Japanese knotweed, it's a plant that has no natural predators, so if left unattended, it will take over. By far, the number one priority of our plan is public safety, and that's not only by controlling hazardous vegetation, but also, very important, our worker's safety. It would be unfair of us to send our guys into an intersection on a regular basis, even with the work zone set up, to expect them to weed whack something when there's no site distance in the first place. Very, very dangerous. So if we can use a little bit of herbicide to help control that on a longer-term basis, it goes a long way. As with any integrated plan, ongoing monitoring is a vital component. So we'll review what we had done last year and adjust our plan accordingly and make changes. And just so you know, our VMP was approved in 2013 in December for five years. So it would be calendar year 2014 through 2018. We're entering into our fifth year of our VMP right now. So again, what is a VMP? It's a plan that is integrated, but it controls four components altogether. And that would be mechanical control, which again would be the actual cutting of the weed, like using our flail mowers you see in the photo. Cultural control, which is good housekeeping technique. So that would be making sure you're cutting a weed before it goes to seed. And if it does go to seed, where are you disposing of that weed seed so it doesn't propagate? Developmental controls, which are done on a planning level. We do this through our CDTR reviews. So if a development comes in and wants to propose some vegetation on the roadside, we might take a look at it and wonder if maybe 15, 20 years from now, that's going to become a problem. So a little bit of foresight, and we'll get those plants moved back a little bit. And obviously, the fourth component is a small amount of herbicides. And again, anytime you have an herbicide component or the potential to use herbicides, you have to file a VMP with the state. You might be familiar with other VMPs from utility companies. They're very common. They come across the desk all the time, most notably National Grid easements, gas and electric, and power line easements. And of course, our favorite plant on the bottom right here is poison ivy. Which essentially, my, our insurance company tells us every summer, exposure to poison ivy is the number one cause of workers' comp injuries, believe it or not. So some steps involved in securing our VMP, just bear with me here, because it's, as I said, it was quite laborious, but we did, we're a pretty good success story, so I'd like to kind of talk about it a little bit. In August of 2013, we drafted in-house a draft VMP, and we submitted it to MDAR, Mass Department of Agricultural Resources. In early October of 2013, a public hearing and public comment notice went out, and it was published in MEPA's Environmental Monitor, which is the central clearinghouse for public notifications on environmental projects. It was also advertised on the MDAR website and on the town's website. MDAR was required to publish an ad in the Town Crier in early October of 2013. The VMP itself was made available on the MDAR's website and at the Wilmington Library for review. We created a very decent, in my estimation, vegetation management plan on our Wilmington DPW Tree Division and Highway Division website. That's still up now. You can take a peek at it. It gives you all the great information that we're talking about tonight. And the draft plan was forwarded also to the Water Department, the Board of Health, and the Conservation Commission for comment. And on Halloween, October 31st, 2013, MDAR held a public hearing for this VMP in this very room, Room 9 at Town Hall. Meanwhile, in early November, the DPW submitted an RDA to the Conservation Commission. An RDA stands for Request for Determination of Applicability, in order to conduct our VMP. November 22nd, 2013 was the deadline for public comment on our VMP. And then in early December of 2013, we made a three-hour presentation to the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources Advisory Panel in Wildfam, Mass. It was a very rigorous question-and-answer section with the panel, but we came out on top, and we got our plan approved at the end of December 2013 for five years. So we thought we were done, but it actually doesn't end there. Every year within our five-year VMP, we're actually required to submit another report. It's an annual report. It's called a YOP, or a yearly operations plan. That gets submitted to the state as well. And that goes into a little bit more detail in the planned work for the year, the previous year's efforts, and outlines safety measures and points of contact. The town is required to provide a copy of the YOP to the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, and the Town Manager's Office for review. And MDAR allows a 45-day comment period on the YOP. No additional public hearing is required for this YOP, since we already had one with the five-year plan, but public comments are accepted up through March 2nd of this year, 2018, for our fifth YOP. And as we progress, right before we start applying herbicides to the right of way, a 21-day notice is required to the Town Manager, as well as a 48-hour newspaper ad in the Town Crier. So the end of the story is, this was an extremely public process, and it's been very successful, had a lot of positive feedback on it. You know, herbicides can be a scary thing, but when you break it down, you're doing it, it's set up through the Department of Agricultural Resources. They heavily monitor it, and you can see the process for getting this approved was very rigorous. So we're doing it all by the book. So again, our ongoing efforts, we feel it's been a success over the past four years. And the shining star here is that this program is implemented exclusively using our in-house DPW staff, which I think a lot of people don't realize. And that's right from writing the five-year plan and annual reports, all done in-house. We did all of our presenting to the state and to the local committees and obtaining approvals, all done in-house. Obviously, performing the actual work associated with cutting and spraying is all done in-house through our Category 40 Certified Applicator Supervision, which is me, and a proper documentation and coordination with MDAR, all done by ourselves. And again, we have our own Category 40 applicator on staff, in addition to five licensed applicators throughout the DPW. Other towns that have successfully done this are listed on the slide behind me, and I will say, all but I believe one are actually being done with consultants. The town of Acton, I believe, did it in-house. I'm not sure if they're still doing it in-house, but just wanted to say that we are literally saving thousands and thousands of dollars in consulting fees by having this done in-house. And also, on the state and utility side, Mass Department of Transportation has an ongoing VMP, as does National Grid, Tennessee Gas, Davis Electric, the Railroad, NSTAR, and Unitil. So here is the great before and after picture. This is actually a slide of Marion Street, before and after. This is pretty close to a school bus stop, littered with poison ivy over the guardrail. So you have hazard vegetation, you have detrimental vegetation, all in one slide here. And about a year and a half after we started our plan, and again, this was mostly mechanical control with a little bit of herbicide use when the time was right, we're able to maintain the sidewalk, which is what it should be, you know, a safe travel spot for pedestrians to keep children off the road. spot for pedestrians to keep children off the road. Another before-and-after photo, a very busy intersection of Conquest Street and Woburn Street. The weeds growing right into the travel lane, preventing you from seeing adequate site distance. And who knew there was even a guardrail there, right? So we were able to remove all that vegetation, improve the site distance, and maintain that.
I actually thought there was a new guardrail put in, Jamie.
Yeah. Actually, you are right. That is a shiny new guardrail. But there was an old one before that that we removed. So the one you're seeing is a new one. So where can you find more information? Again, our vegetation management website is probably the best spot to look. It has a copy of our approved five-year vegetation management plan, and our draft two thousand and eighteen yearly operations plan, along with links to the Department of Agriculture website. And on the right side here is the MDR website itself. It lists every single yearly operations plan and VMP that's approved in the state currently, and also points of contact. If anybody has questions on the types of herbicides that are pre-approved for sensitive areas, they can contact the state. All the contact information is there. And that's essentially it for our VMP, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention one more thing, and that is our DPW staff. And anybody who watched the Patriots game last night, and certainly Bill Belichick's press conference, he had a great quote there, which I had to add to the slide last minute, because it meant a lot to me. And the quote is, "That's what a successful team is, a group of people who do their jobs." And I can't tell you how proud I am of our DPW staff on a daily basis. It's essentially exactly what they do. They come in every day. These guys hold themselves to the utmost professionalism, and they do their job, day in, day out. They're constantly saving money for the town, projects that we do in-house that other towns would never even touch, like cover replacements and berm replacements that you see here. They're very committed twenty-four-seven. And I'm here tonight with our town engineer, Paula Looney, and Joe LeBeau, our business and utility manager. This is a labor of love. We're all here twenty-four-seven. This is what we do, and we do it for the benefit of the residents, and to make Wilmington a better place to live. So just like to give a shout-out and give credit where credit was due. And at that, that's our VMP. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jamie. Jeff, you have something you wanted to?
Well, I would just add, you know, in addition to the work that Jamie talked about here this evening, in terms of the vegetation management plan and the work that's done in-house, another aspect of what the DPW has done, and Jamie in particular, the last several years now, is really improving the culture of safety amongst our employees. Certainly, DPW is one of those categories, as well as many of the other, all the other departments. But as you know, for those of you who attended the Mass. Municipal Association meeting, once again, the town was recognized by MYA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, which is our insurance carrier for our attention to risk management, the amount of effort that gets put into safety. Jamie chairs the Safety Committee. D Casey sits on the committee, as well as a number of other department heads. But, you know, there's been a number of different programs over the last few years, everything from the toolbox talks, so to speak, where Jamie and some of the foremen will have kind of a pre-game, if you will, before crews go out, to just make sure that everyone has their vests and all the proper safety gear that's required when they're doing a road detail, a road project. There's a number of different programs that MYA offers that, through the Safety Committee, employees have been involved in each year now for several years. And, you know, it's one of those things that really doesn't necessarily show up on the radar screen, except that we are saving money. Again, I think I mentioned, last year, in each of the last several years, we've saved several, actually a couple hundred thousand dollars in terms of avoided premium because of our efforts to control our risk. And so one of the things that was presented at the MYA luncheon was this Risk Management Best Practices Award. We received an award, you'll recall, last year and again this year. And so I just want to say hats off to Jamie and the committee.
Yes, indeed. We were, a few of us were at the MMA Conference over the weekend. And after the MYA, there's a luncheon that MYA, our insurance agency, does for us, not for us, but for all of their members. And it's an annual report and discussion of what's going on with MYA throughout the year. And then at the end of that session, they announce the winners. And I, this is now a couple of times that this has happened, and I don't know about you guys, but I felt a little bit stupid, because here, I'm going up there, you know, we're going up taking credit for, hey, Wilmington's great, but ultimately, it's you guys that are doing all this, and, you know, the folks that you represent. So congratulations certainly is appropriate, and is conveyed to you and to them through you, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
Where you certainly make us proud, and we're glad of the extra effort that everyone puts in that yields those kind of recognitions by our agency. So I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak here. Greg?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Once again, thanks very much. Congratulations on another award, well-deserved. And certainly, thanks to your department, I said at the last meeting, particularly this time of year. I know you guys are somewhat strained. You guys are working really hard in tough conditions. I really appreciate everything you guys do, but also, I really appreciate you looking forward for creative ideas to save money for our residents. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Mr. Dindel. And thank you, Jamie, and the entire staff of the DPW, for what they do for the town, the residents. And very impressive, you were, the town of Wilmington was actually one of fifteen out of three hundred and fifty-one municipalities, one of fifteen to receive an award. So that was quite impressive to, in a proud moment, for us to be able to accept that award that you and your staff accomplished for the residents of Wilmington. So thank you very much for what you do, day in and day out.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, Jamie, thank you. Like was said at the last meeting, I think myself, as a resident of close to thirty years, and we notice when the guys are out plowing on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, and a couple of weeks ago, and they're putting relentless hours. I think that's when we notice it ourselves the most, and we really appreciate it. And they've been doing it for a long time. And you mentioned the guys in the trenches, and you see the pictures in the background. We really appreciate those guys, but it starts from the top, in my opinion, also. Jamie and you're an excellent leader, and I think these guys do a great job, every one of them. I know there's a couple ladies that work down there, too. So the whole department, this town is lucky to have such a dedicated team of DPW workers. You see them at the Fourth of July, you see them plowing, you see them out on the side of the road, cutting the grass, in the fields and cutting the grass. And it's not easy work, but I know that a lot of them really enjoy it. So I really appreciate everything that you guys do for this entire town, all year round. Thank you.
Appreciate those words. And I'll make sure that gets back to the staff as well.
Please do. Just a couple, I have a couple of questions. Well, I want to echo some of the sentiments that my colleagues, well, all of the sentiments, but kind of related to what Ed just said. You know, we see the gentlemen and maybe ladies out wearing the vests or the bright shirts, and they're doing the work. And that's, I think, the first visible component of what people associate as DPW, the orange trucks, and the guys and folks out doing this work. What isn't immediately apparent is the level of science and the professionalism that you revealed for us tonight. And so I'm really grateful to you for that perspective. I think it's important for the residents to recognize that, you know, that the DPW isn't winging it, that this is a purposeful, that there's planning, and there's execution that goes into this. And really, like Ed said, it starts with the professionalism, your education, and the people that you work with, really putting in that extra time, and making sure that you're not just going out and whacking some weeds, but you're doing it with a system, with a plan in place. And that's appreciated. With that being said, you, how do you identify those locations? You showed a couple of slides where there's growth over a guardrail or whatever, and then clearly impeding view around the street. Is that just something that you and your staff are recognizing as you conduct drive-arounds throughout the street? How does that come to you?
Yeah. So some of it is yes. I mean, that's the beauty of having guys on plow routes, right? So in the winter, we can actually see these locations that are maybe need to be targeted a little bit more, because we have somebody in each section of town. But obviously, the weeds aren't really at their best during the winter months. So we'll go back and kind of review that on an annual basis. A lot of it has to do with the volume of traffic at an intersection, or the volume of pedestrians on a sidewalk. You know, a main street might get a little bit more attention than a back road, because you know what? If weeds are growing on a back road and not bothering anybody, there's really no sense in treating them, unless they become a problem to the point where they're hurting the infrastructure. And that in and of itself is a part of responsible weed management. We're not just going out and blanking, spraying everything that we can. We have to be selective, because, you know, there's only so much herbicide we can use or we'd want to use. But even at that, we've only got a couple of sets of hands that can actually provide the weed-whacking and cutting, too. So we do have to prioritize it, but it's really a group effort. And we do, you know, also rely on people calling in and saying, hey, you haven't been down the street. This is a problem. You know, they can feel free to call us. We'll go out and investigate it, and make a determination if it fits into our priority.
Last question I have, thank you for that, is about public townland versus private land. Are there cases where there's private, or growth that's happening on private land that's infringing and coming out into townland, sidewalks, et cetera?
There are. That happens more likely with trees, and this vegetation management is more with weeds. So kind of two different issues. We have a right to trim tree growth that's growing into the right-of-way. Before we do that, we generally try to contact the homeowner and let him know our intentions. But the vast majority of the weeds that we're dealing with are actually town weeds. They're in the right-of-way. And, you know, if there's ever a question, we always reach out to the homeowner.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Jamie, you mentioned that the VMP is ending in two thousand and eighteen.
Yes.
So are you reapplying for another five-year?
Yeah. So our five-year plan ends in two thousand and eighteen. So we'll use this calendar year, two thousand and eighteen, as our last year for our current VMP. And it takes a good six to eight months to prepare the next one. So we might take a year off next year and kind of get that application ready, kind of take a step back and look at our entire program, and then start it up again. So I would envision, we're probably going to take the year off from management. That doesn't mean we won't be weed-whacking. We'll still be doing the mechanical control, but any sort of spraying will probably be postponed for a year. And I think we're at a pretty good point, because when we started back in two thousand and fourteen versus where we are now, we're using exponentially less herbicide. And that's the whole point of it. So we will be reapplying.
Anything else? Excellent. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Want to get up and sit back down for the next appointment? It's all Jamie, all night.
[laughing]
Our scheduled seven-thirty appointment, Jamie, you're going long here. You're getting us behind schedule.
Yeah.
Is with Jamie, DPW Operations Manager, and Joe LeBeau.
Right.
Thank you, Joe, as well as Paul Looney, our town engineer, with regards to the Route Ninety-three Water Line Replacement Project. So I'm not sure who's taking the ball on this one.
Yeah. So I'll give my voice a rest and slide over, and I'm going to let these two gentlemen kind of take the lead on this one.
Well, Paul doesn't have slides.
This'll be very quick. Okay, good evening. I'm Joe LeBeau, Business and Utility Manager for DPW. Of course, you already know Jamie. And Paul Looney, to my left, is the town engineer. Jeff had reached out to us and asked us to give a quick summary update on the status of the I ninety-three water main break that we had a couple of weeks ago. So for some background information, I ninety-three at Woburn Street, there's about a hundred and seventy feet of ten-inch-old cast-iron pipe that sits on the underside of the bridge. This cast-iron pipe was installed in the late nineteen-fifties, nineteen fifty-eight or so. A couple of weeks ago, at the end of December, December twenty-ninth, fortunately, we experienced the water main break. This happened during the subzero frigid temperature stretch that we had at the end of the month. Fortunately, though, a few years prior to this, the Water Division had the foresight to install a gate valve in the area in preparation for this such event. So what that enabled us to do is although the pipe was leaking, we were able to shut down the pipe on each side of the bridge. Fortunately, we were able to do that, and then also still provide water to all the residences in the area. So in one event, it was unfortunate that we had a water main break, but on the other side, it was fortunate that we were able to shut down the leak and still provide service to all the houses in the area. With its unique location being above I ninety-three, we proactively decided to have the pipe inspected by a structural engineer. So on January eleventh, about nine-thirty at night, we met a structural engineer that was supplied by Green International Affiliates, one of our engineering consultants that we use. Upon seeing the pipe, the structural engineer recommended that the remaining length of the hundred and seventy feet of pipe be removed as soon as possible. So knowing the severity of the situation, again, this was on January eleventh, the following day, various town departments worked together to really get the ball moving, to have this section of pipe removed as soon as possible. There were a couple of different steps that needed to be done. First step was for Paul, town engineer, like I mentioned, to coordinate with MassDOT and request an access permit from the state, which they ultimately granted that same day, I believe. We also reached out to DCAM, the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, and requested a waiver for the various procurement laws that are typically applied for a construction project. Again, that was requested that day, and it was granted within a few hours. Third thing we had to do was secure a contractor, which entailed two things. Number one, finding a contractor who had the ability to finish this project, and also the availability. Being such a tight stretch of window, we needed someone really to get there as soon as possible. And again, who has the expertise, the equipment, the assets to perform a job of the scale. So between the work of the town staff, Paul, Jamie, Mr. Hull, and then the work of coordination with MassDOT and DCAM, and especially the contractor, fortunately, we were able to remove this pipe last Thursday night and last Friday night. So I'm happy to say that as of tonight, that a hundred and seventy-foot stretch of pipe that had potential to be a problem has been removed. So that's the short term, where we stand today. As we look to the future, what's the long term? So this pipe, as I mentioned, was installed around nineteen fifty-eight, and it had been identified in our water management plan as needing to be replaced in the future. Where are we now? That future is now. Okay. So the plan for us is to incorporate the replacement of that hundred and seventy-foot section of pipe in the next year's fiscal capital improvement plan. So right now, we're working on a plan on how to get that done. We're talking with our engineers, and I fully expect to be incorporated into the next year's capital improvement plan. So to recap, there was a leak in the pipe above I ninety-three in the Woburn Street overpass. We were able to shut down the pipe, still allowing water to all the residences in the area. The pipe was subsequently removed from the overpass. And the long-term plan is to replace that section of pipe with new, in this case, it'll be twelve-inch pipe, whereas the existing pipe was ten-inch. And really, that's where we stand as of now. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I can just leave it at that. Unless you guys have anything that I possibly missed? No, I think you covered it all.
Thank you. Thanks for that. I only have one question that I can think of, and I'm anxious to hear my colleagues. How were you able to continue to provide water with that pipe shut down?
Sure. So luckily, we have redundancy in the area of that part of the water distribution system. We have a water main that is down Woburn Street. We have a water main that runs down Fordham Road and cuts through an easement and reconnects to that area. So that's the reason. It's the redundancy that's supplied.
Okay. I presume there had to be some other avenue there, but there's probably some, not risk, but until we get the new, until we get this replaced, that redundancy isn't in place, right? So there's some urgency, I imagine, to...
Sure. Absolutely. That's one of our main thoroughfares for our water distribution system. In fact, our Sargent Water Treatment Plant sits within a mile of that location, being the biggest provider of water of the two plants we have. It's critical to get this replaced sooner rather than later.
Okay. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Yeah, Greg?
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. I was actually, the question I was just going to ask, how long do you think we can go here without having to replace this permanently? And we have a nice short-term solution. It sounds like you guys were right on top of this, and I appreciate that. But how long can we go? And you're telling us that it's critical that we get it done now.
Yeah. I think, and as of today, we're estimating, we want to get this done first thing next fiscal year. So fiscal year begins July first. I would anticipate, and certainly hope, that bidding documents be ready by that point, and the project would kick off shortly thereafter.
So I guess my next question would be for Jeff. Are we going to, are you going to budget for this now?
Yes. So the plan is to budget for it for fiscal nineteen. It will not require an appropriation, because it's coming out of the water fund, so it is associated with the water budget. But we are anticipating a borrowing, so that will require approval at town meeting. We're estimating... We're estimating eight hundred and fifty thousand at this point is, is about the cost. I mean, the engineering folks are still doing their review and we'll have a, um, better number, um, by the time we get a town meeting, but that's what we're anticipating at this point.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, no, I live on Woburn Street and I was driving by and I saw a group of the DPW guys out there working. I was wondering what was going on on the bridge. I couldn't believe that there was a water pipe out going across a bridge. Um, but just you, you made mention that you were gonna wait to start the process to, um, to bid out or whatever you're gonna do to put the RFP together until July. Wouldn't you wanna do that soon? So you're hitting the ground running as soon as the fiscal year hits?
Right, and that's that's fully what we anticipate doing.
Oh, okay.
Uh, typically, we wait till July first to act, to actually begin the construction, but we do work with the consultant, uh, before that point to have everything ready to go and actually have a bid opening, uh, prior to that time.
Prior to that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, uh, sir. Um, what type of piping is gonna be, you said twelve inch, but what type of, it's not gonna be cast iron, I assume?
No, 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 it won't. Uh, more than likely, it'll be a ductile iron pipe.
Are there any protections of that piping being under the bridge other than, I'm sure it's exposed to a lot of different things.
Sure, there's an insulation, uh, wrap that's typically used, uh, modern day, yes.
Thank you for the hard work, again, from the DPW and all you guys, engineers, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
That's it. Appreciate the update. Uh, Joe, Paul, and Jamie. Uh, Jamie, a lot of content tonight. The other gentleman, thank you for being here and for the, uh, for the information about this. We look forward to the next steps, I guess.
Thanks for the time, guys. Appreciate it.
You're gonna get that plaque to him, uh, at some, tomorrow. So Jamie, you can come pick up your, uh, your spoils, uh, at the office tomorrow.
Great.
With that, Jeff, we can navigate into Communications.
Uh, right, so under Communications, uh, there's a memorandum, uh, to the board that just, uh, uh, confirms that Gary Donovan, uh, who, as you know, has been the Deputy Fire Chief, has been appointed to serve as the Acting Fire Chief on an interim basis here while we're finalizing the uh, process for, uh, naming a new, uh, Fire Chief. As you know, uh, the Fire Chief's position is a civil service position. Uh, we went through a, an assessment center that was, uh, conducted in early, uh, December. Uh, and so there were candidates that went through that process. Uh, we just, this past, uh, week, uh, received the, uh, list, uh, listing of, uh, how candidates scored. Uh, and so the process at this point will be that the, uh, top three candidates, uh, will be going through an interview process. I've asked Dee Casey, uh, the Assistant Town Manager and HR Director to coordinate that. And there will be some, uh, department heads that will participate in that, uh, interview process and they will offer comments, uh, to me and then I will in turn, uh, meet with the candidates and make a selection. So my expectation is that, uh, the selection for a permanent Fire Chief, uh, will be made within the next four to six weeks.
Thank you.
Uh, next, under Correspondence, uh, is a memo to the board, uh, uh, noting that I was contacted by, uh, Representative Lynn Takorsik, uh, Government Incentive Consultant with Business Strategies Development, Inc. She is working, uh, for Analog Devices, uh, to pursue the, uh, a, uh, tax increment financing, uh, option with them. So, uh, Analog has been, uh, looking at the prospect of, uh, engaging in some expansion on their existing campus. Uh, part of it involves installation of a parking garage and then there's another, uh, building that's slated for research and development and, uh, potentially, uh, a third space that they reference as a hub area that would connect some of their, uh, existing facilities. Uh, and so as part of, uh, this effort, um, uh, they're looking at the, uh, prospect of tax incentive or increment financing, which, uh, there are a number of communities across the state, uh, that have done this. Essentially, what it would allow for if approved, uh, is that the, uh, value of that new construction, if you will, um, uh, there would be a plan worked out with the town, uh, so that the, uh, value of that construction wouldn't, uh, specifically be, um, taxed at one hundred percent. There would be some kind of a schedule over time. Uh, the schedules can range in duration from five years, a minimum of five years, up to twenty years. And the incremental reduction can be anywhere from one percent to a hundred percent of the additional tax. So, uh, after being contacted by Ms., uh, Takorsky, uh, uh, she was indicating that, uh, Analog, uh, would like to, uh, meet with the Board of Selectmen uh, to discuss their proposal. They're actually on a fairly aggressive, uh, track here. They, they're ideally would be looking, uh, with the board's support, uh, to bring this before a town meeting, uh, in May. Uh, the process basically is that, uh, the Board of Selectmen would have to, uh, endorse this proposal. Uh, there would be an article that would be placed on the town meeting warrant. It would be, uh, brought forward at the town meeting. If approved, then it would go to, uh, the State Agency, that is, uh, responsible, uh, for these projects, which is the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council and they meet in June, as I understand it. Uh, so the request basically is, uh, that the board, um, consider having a special, uh, meeting of the Board of Selectmen on February fifth, uh, to receive, uh, their proposal. Uh, they would then be looking to, uh, appear back before the board at your meeting on February twenty-sixth, uh, to, uh, receive consideration as to whether the board would support, uh, such a proposal. Uh, as I indicated, uh, in my, uh, one of my, uh, communications on this, uh, when this first came forward, obviously, I hadn't had an opportunity to, uh, look at all the details and formulate an opinion. We did just meet with them this morning. Uh, staff from, uh, the departments, uh, Building Inspector, Health Director, uh, Dee Casey, the Assistant Town Manager, Karen Rashis, the Assessor, and Valerie Gingrich, uh, to get some preliminary information from them. It's my understanding that we'll receive an application tomorrow that will provide some more details, uh, about their, uh, proposal. Uh, as I suspect you may be aware, this would be a first for Wilmington. Uh, they did come before, uh, the board, actually in June of two thousand and eleven. Uh, at the time, the proposal was slightly different. Uh, but it, a- as a, a- after coming before the board, uh, there were subsequent communications where the project uh, was downgraded and then ultimately, as I understand it, because of some economic factors, they, uh, postponed it. But, um, uh, this is something that the board will be asked underboard to consider, uh, as to whether the board would be, uh, willing to have a meeting, a special meeting.
To that end, I'm gonna jump out of sequence here and go right to that board to consider item. Um, Jeff, and in so doing, so I'm jumping to, uh, item six on our agenda. Remind me, and maybe you said it and I didn't hear it, but remind me why, um, of the dates that require that we would potentially be looking at having this special Board of Selectmen meeting on the fifth, which right now, we don't have one scheduled. Uh, why could we not group this conversation into our scheduled, what, January twelfth?
Next Monday. Next Monday, we have a budget meeting.
Yeah, we're scheduled to meet the twelfth and the twenty-sixth in February.
Right, February. Why couldn't we do it the twelfth?
Uh, well, one of the issues, um, is that the w- warrant, uh, the requirements that we have for, uh, submission of warrant articles, the last warrant articles are due on February ninth. Um, we have, as you recall, various dates. Uh, the first date is February second for petition articles, February fifth for, uh, I believe it's the non-petition zoning articles and then February ninth is the last date. So, um, if your meeting, if your first meeting isn't until the twelfth, that would, um...
Be after that date.
Be after those dates. The other thing to keep in mind is that, uh, it would seem to me the board is gonna need to have at least, at least two meetings to, uh, to consider this. Uh, I, I can't imagine the board would wanna be in a position of, um, making a decision on the twelfth or even, uh, you know, e- having a meeting on the fifth. There could be further discussion if necessary on the twelfth and then, um, arguably, the twenty-ninth would be, uh, the date that, at least in terms of what Analog is seeking in terms of a, a timeline.
But does that give us enough time to get articles for, if if it were to move forward?
Well, the, um, m- meeting on the twenty-sixth, um, w- we could have an article prepared. Uh, ultimately, the board will be asked to sign the warrant on March twelfth. So, you know, we do have some measure of, uh, flexibility there. Certainly, it's, you know, we wanna get the warrant prepared, uh, sooner rather than later.
So the question then becomes one of, um, adding another meeting just for the specific purposes of reviewing the pr- the proposal that Analog is gonna send to you, you said, potentially tomorrow.
Right, and and so one, one other option just to consider is the recognizing that the board will have a series of back-to-back meetings here. You, you could consider meeting on the fifth, uh, and take up the items that you would otherwise take up on the twelfth. Add the meeting on the fifth, that that's another option.
That's right. I forgot we had talked about that, so...
I'm missing something here. I'm s- I, I don't, if we don't have to vote on it until the twenty-sixth, again, what's the urgency of the fifth? And if the urgency is the fifth, why don't we just do it after your budget presentation on the twenty-ninth? Uh, can you run through that again for me?
Sure, well...
I'm missing something because I...
I mean, typically, the, the budget presentation on, the budget presentation on the ninth is, um, that's the only topic on the agenda. Not to say that it has to be, but that's what the practice has been, that the, the budget presentation is solo. Uh, the meeting of the fifth, uh, and I don't know offhand, um, if, what their availability is on the twelfth. We, uh, in talking with the consultant, um, the, they were asking for the meeting of the fif- fifth so that they could present, uh, the information and then give the board some opportunity to review and consider it before coming back to the board, uh, on the, uh, twenty-sixth.
Could we just flip flop it and meet the fifth and not the twelfth?
Yeah, that's...
But, uh, again, i- if we have it on the twelfth, we're, we still have two weeks before the twenty-sixth. That's what I don't understand.
The ninth.
Why the fifth? What do you mean?
Yeah, was the fifth being driven by Anal-, uh, by the folks from Analog?
The Analog was suggesting the fifth, yes. I, I, um, I don't, uh, know whether they were able to meet on the twelfth.
Does something have to be submitted on the ninth? Is that what my colleague is saying?
Part of the issue is, we need to have a warrant prepared.
So we're preparing something before we even vote on it on the twenty-sixth? That kinda doesn't make sense to me.
No, we, we need to have the warrant in, in form for the board to sign on March twelfth. We're not gonna put anything...
On March twelfth?
March twelfth.
Okay.
So we're not gonna put anything on the warrant with regard to this issue, I, I would think, until the board has made a decision as to whether you in fact wanna go forward. Um, you know, I, could we meet on the twelfth? Um, again, I, I guess if push comes to shove and there's a, and there's just not the ability to meet on the fifth, the board could meet on the twelfth.
I mean, I'm available on the fifth. I'm just trying to figure out why we have to meet on the fifth and and not keep our schedule on the twelfth. I, I still haven't heard a reason for that.
When this was first, okay, yeah, please, Dee, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm sorry, hi, um, may I speak?
Please.
So I was also present in the meeting this morning and I think part of the urgency on Analog's part is that they also have to present their plan to their internal boards and get acknowledgement from their business people that this project is going to move forward. Wilmington is not the only site that they are looking at doing this expansion. So I think they need to get their business decisions in a row as quickly as possible so they can make decisions on whether or not they're going to pursue the TIF here with Lex, uh, Wilmington or with some other community that they may have, um, visited for, uh, a site. So I think they have their own internal clock is ticking very quickly as well. That's the sense that I got at the meeting.
Right, I, I think that's what happened back about six years ago too. They had sort of implied they would go somewhere else as well, but they're pretty well entrenched in Wilmington. I don't know that they would, oh, would do that or...
Yeah, I mean, this, this obviously is a, um, you know, would be a negotiation. They, they did indicate that they have, uh, their headquarters are in Norwood. They have a research and development facility in Chelmsford. Uh, they also have, uh, facility in Limerick, Ireland, which apparently, it sounds like the last time around. Uh, and again, I don't know what the internal dynamics were, but they ultimately decided to, uh, put their investment in Limerick, um, instead of the expansion in Wilmington. So, um, you know, to what degree, you know, how serious they are about relocating, uh, their facilities out of Wilmington. One of the things that was presented to us today is that they're looking to consolidate their operations. So they have, uh, I believe, two hundred in Chelmsford, uh, two hundred employees, four hundred in Norwood and sixteen hundred here in Wilmington and they're looking to consolidate, um, those operations, whether they consolidate in Wilmington or Norwood or Chelmsford, I guess is somewhat up for debate.
I'll just say that, uh, I'm fine with it. If we have to move it to the fifth, I'm fine with that. If you wanna combine it with the twelfth meeting, I mean, they also just gave us five thousand dollars for some nice trees too, so trying to be mindful of that.
Yeah, one question I have, um, you, you talked about the expansion, but also in the, the letter that we got, that also considering Wilmington for, um, their corporate headquarters. Did they mention anything like that today, other than the con- consolidation you just mentioned today or?
Uh, that was mentioned, uh, in, in a conversation, uh, that one of the representatives had with Valerie at a prior meeting. I don't recall, it may have come up, uh, just in passing today, but clearly, the emphasis was on, um, their business expansion.
So, maybe I'm thinking ahead of schedule here, but can we get what, uh, Analog Devices pays for taxes now and what, um, any future expansions would cost? Or w- w- what benefits we would get from any future expansions? So then, when they come asking for a TIF, we have some information in front of us? Is that something we'll have ahead of time?
Yes, my expectation is that the information that they will be providing starting tomorrow will include some of that information. Clearly, we can, uh, obtain from the assessor, uh, the t- the current taxes that they're paying. Um, what I think will be helpful to understand is, um, the schedule for their investment, uh, expansion and what that would equate to in the form of new growth in, in property taxes if it was to be valued at a hundred percent, as would typically be the case. Um, i- you know, and again, they, they're also presumably gonna provide, uh, the board with what kind of a schedule they're looking at. Are they looking for a, a ten-year TIF, a fifteen-year TIF? Are they looking to, uh, for the town to, um, reduce that tax on that additional investment to seventy-five percent of its value or fifty percent of its value? Those are all questions that, that we don't have answers to at this point. I mean, the other issue I would point out that, you know, makes it a, a bit challenging is that we have other employers, uh, other companies that have come to town, uh, in recent years and one in mind that, uh, that, um, ha- have requested TIFs that have not been granted, uh, TIFs. So, um, you know, it's, it's really, um, a, a challenge. On the one hand, I think we, we need to recognize that, uh, these are not, um, unusual. Burlington, I know, has done, uh, three. Uh, Andover has done some, Lexington has done some TIFs. So, um, you know, I think they're, I guess, in part, really a mechanism for, uh, companies to try to reduce their operating costs and, um, so that's the environment we're in.
Jeff, excuse me, even if we approve this and still the guidelines kinda, what, what, um, the assistant manager mentioned that they want to know ahead of time so that they can move on their end by the end of the week of the fifth. week of the 5th, yet we're still not voting until the 26th, so I don't know why they need to know, because we're not going to be making a decision on the 5th or the 12th, so they can move any speed they want to move. But ultimately, does this still go to town meeting for the residents to vote this TIF?
That's right. So, the process...
So, even if we approve it, the town people can say, we don't want to open up Pandora's Box, and all of a sudden, we give a break to this company, everybody's going to be looking, and then the taxes change, and then we're, you know, not getting the revenue that we should be getting from these companies. So, it still goes to town meeting for...
Yeah, there's no question. It goes to town meeting, and ultimately has to be approved by town meeting, and if it is approved, then it would need to go before this councilary reference that is, that meets in June, apparently their next meeting.
And they can, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to, sort of in response to what you just said, and I'll certainly go back, come back to you, is if this body, if the Board of Selectmen were to make the determination that we did not want to at this time pursue a TIF with Analog or really anybody else, whatever, and didn't want to put this kind of a vote before the town meeting, that would give Analog the information that they need to make some business decisions, right? So, if we did put it forth and it went to town meeting, that doesn't mean it's a lock. That doesn't mean the town meeting voters are going to support it, but it gives Analog some data, some information to make some business decisions, or maybe leave that window open, whereas if we didn't put it before town meeting, that window is closed. So, I think that's kind of, I don't know this, but I suspect that's the position that they have at their, in their corporate headquarters. Moreover, I wanted to say, I think if we can, and Greg, to your point, I think if we can combine the business of this board that we were planning to do, that we normally would have done on the 12th into the 5th and kill all the birds with one stone on the 5th, that also gives us the opportunity to hear their case, to digest it, to review it, you know, in great detail, hopefully before, because they're going to present some of this in writing to town management prior to the 5th. And that will give us an opportunity to say thank you for coming and presenting, and they can leave, and maybe there's a renegotiation, not renegotiation, but there's negotiation. They're going to put something on the table, perhaps that's not exactly what we want to bite on, but if they give it to us on the 5th and we want to come back, then we'll go back to them with something other than what they proposed, that gives us another, you know, set of weeks to sort of offer up that alternative view. So, I think that's why there's a little bit of a, I guess, an argument that can be made for trying to get this in the queue as soon as possible, just so we see what we're dealing with.
Right. I think it's important that the board receive this information, receive it directly from Analog as soon as possible. I would not expect necessarily that whatever is presented in the way of a schedule and the terms and conditions would ultimately be signed off on at that point. Typically, as I understand it, the way these work, there is some give and take. I know, for example, there was a Burlington had a TIF with, that was approved a few years ago for Keurig, and as I understand it, there was some negotiations, and it ultimately turned out to be like a 15-year TIF, and they had a schedule for how the taxes were going to be reduced. But that, you know, there was a conversation that went on back and forth between the company and, I think, the town administrator at the time.
Another observation I'd like to make, yeah, Dee, I'll come right out, is that, and Kevin, you were in the economic development session at MMA over the weekend. These TIFs have become a valuable tool, a useful tool, not absolute necessity, but it's another tool in the tool chest that's available to cities and towns potentially to use to incent large corporations to sort of choose that city or town to set up their operation. Now, it doesn't mean you have to go down that road, but I think it's, my personal feeling is that it would be imprudent to excuse the idea because it opens up Pandora's Box. That said, irrespective of Analog, because I have no idea what they're asking for, and I'll get to, I have to talk about that in a second, too. But irrespective of the Analog question, I have some serious concerns about working with TIFs now because we have no criteria for under what circumstances we would offer them. So, to your point, I think, Kevin, you know, I think we ought to, as a town, if we're going to be receptive at all to working with this tax incremental financing tool, I feel like we need to have an understanding of how the tool works, what are the criteria under which we would even entertain having a TIF discussion? And if we did have that TIF discussion, what are the criteria under which we would offer, you know, some percentages? So, if there were some guidelines or a straw man, some basis for which we as a body and the town could look at when it's appropriate to offer a TIF and under what circumstances, then that serves as, you know, as a, like I say it again, it serves as the guideline. In the absence of that, every single corporation in town, or would-be potential corporation in town, will come knocking on our door asking for a TIF, and we have no, we like you, we don't like you? I mean, that's the criteria. In the absence of criteria, there is none. And so, I really feel like, you know, we're being, well, I should, I would prefer that we had some criteria in place before we actually argued or listened to a TIF presentation. I have to keep on talking, I'm sorry. The reason I can't deliberate, I won't be able to participate in this conversation. Analog is one of my largest accounts, and I draw direct income in the form of commissions from sales that I make to Analog Devices. And so, with regards to TIFs, in general, I feel comfortable talking about it, but it's clear and absolute that I have a conflict of interest and really wouldn't be able to offer up my opinions and participate in the conversation, the deliberation, and any votes that come out of the presentation that Analog makes. So, I think Mr. McCoy will be back with us on the 5th, and he will probably have to, and we'll bring him up to speed as quickly and as comprehensively as we can. Assuming he is back, then he would chair that portion of the meeting. If he's not back, then we'll work with one of you gentlemen to have you sit in. So, I wanted to share that as well. Before we kind of get into any kind of meaty conversation about Analog, if that's the direction you guys want to take, I'm going to have to recuse myself from that portion of it. Talking about the TIFs in general, or talking about meeting on the 5th for the combined 5th and 12th content, I think that's where we should focus our energies. Yes, Dee, I'm sorry.
Just two points. So, we're meeting again with Analog on Friday afternoon, so I will ask specifically your question, Selectman Kyra, about the timeline, why it's so aggressive and why they need to, what decisions and business decisions they need to make on their part in order to get this through their deadline as well. And I also plan to tomorrow, reach out to a former colleague who is an Economic Development Director, to see if she has any guidelines on that community and how they evaluate TIFs, because they have done several. So, I am trying to gather as much information I can for the board.
Thanks, Casey. That's, for me, that's useful. I appreciate hearing that. John, I'll be right, right out. I want to make sure everyone's, yeah, Ed, please.
I'd like to also talk a little about what you were speaking about, Mr. Shampoo. Yes, the town does need some kind of guidelines on TIFs and what benefits do the town get? And you hear about tax breaks all over the country, and you hear about Google and Apple and all these other ones, and yes, I was in that economic development meeting with you guys over the weekend, and we need an economic development team, in my opinion. That's a whole different subject, but we definitely need some type of guidelines. One of the questions I have, when I got this, actually Friday night, when I came home from that first part of the meeting, how many employees does Analog have that live in Wilmington?
That was a piece of information that they are going to be providing, but we don't have that right now.
Right. So, I mean, that's something that I would want to know, even if I was at town meeting, voting on this whole, this TIF that might come out of this. And then, how many people will they hire? If we give them an X amount of tax break, can we tie in jobs created? And those jobs have to go to a certain amount of Wilmington residents? Is that something that we can do? And these are the guidelines that Mr. Shampoo was just talking about. So, these, and some of the guidelines that we learned about over the weekend was X amount of company, X amount of employees, X amount of revenue, X amount of tax. So, these are some of the guidelines that we need, because this isn't going to be the only one that comes in front of this board, because, in my opinion, because the gentleman from Worcester said he was giving out, he has like 14 or 15. That's a whole different animal, but he helped a very plidy area of Worcester to become very resourceful, that community. But he has many, and I was glad to hear that Burlington and, did Lexington have any?
Yeah, Lexington and...
Yeah. So, all those communities, and I'd like to learn about those ones, and if they had any type of guidelines ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I mean, we mentioned it a little bit at that meeting, that what is the threshold? You know, is it a million-dollar company?
Right, exactly.
Do we say, yes, but you have to hire 200 people from Wilmington? We kind of threw all those different things around, and what is the criteria of this? Because we haven't been, but it's interesting to hear that Analog has 1,600 employees in Wilmington and 400 to 600 in the other locations. So, just hard for me to imagine that they would move this location. It could be possible, but hard for me to consider that they would take 1,600 and relocate, you know, but I'm not opposed to it, and I'd like to hear what they have to offer and some of the criteria from some other areas, but I certainly don't want to be put in a position where they're going to say, we're leaving if you don't do it, especially when they have 1,600 employees here. Hard to think that they would do that, but...
Right. So, the matter at hand, I think, still is, can we and is it fair to combine the 12th and 5th meetings into one meeting on the 5th, presuming that that's, in fact, that there is some urgency on all of our parts? I mean, I feel like it's not an unfair request that they're asking of us. So, I, to the extent that we can, I'd like to try to be a little bit, I guess, bending in that regard, and I think it actually serves us as well. So, is that...
I don't have a problem meeting the 5th and the 12th. I just don't see the urgency to have a meeting on the 5th. Do we need the meeting on the 12th as for regular business? We always meet the 2nd and the 4th. By meeting a week earlier, is that going to throw something else out of whack? And that's what I don't want to do. That's why, if we have to go the 5th and the 12th, I'm fine with that, just so it doesn't throw any other of your, you know, routine business off.
As far as I know, we do not have any other scheduled appointments, Beverly, any, the 12th, at this point, we don't have any licenses or anything coming up? No. So, nothing that we are, that would otherwise be on the docket for the 12th?
I mean, if there is, should we just leave it open anyways? Say we meet on the 5th, but if something comes up...
If something were to materialize that demanded our attention, we can always call it, with the proper notifications, we can call a meeting. But if our plan was to try to conduct the business of the 12th on the 5th after we've heard out Analog's presentation...
Right.
Then that leaves us in a position where maybe we have to schedule the 12th if something comes up.
I know we can do it with Greg, myself, and Mr. Kyra, if Mike's not here, on the 5th, but I think I would feel more comfortable with having four members on, four members.
I'm presuming that Mr. McCoy is going to be back on the 5th. If he's not, then I think that might throw a wrench in the game.
I know we've done it in the past, we just remembered, but I think...
Yeah, this is, this is important.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's very important.
You don't want, there to be one Selectman not to have his voice buried.
Right, right. Yeah, just because he's, because he's ill, you know, or not ill, but because he's infirmed for a period. I feel bad that I can't participate, but I know that I, you know, it's just, it's an ethics violation if I do.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Eaton, you had something you wanted to offer, it might be pertinent to what we're talking about, is that...
Yeah, it wasn't on the scheduling issue, it was more that if this board were inclined to endorse an article at town meeting, the Finance Committee might add another level of scrutiny, just so we can report and recommend to town meeting on the proposed TIF. So, I don't know if that was on the radar yet, but it seems like a significant enough issue, and without, like, an Economic Development Committee in place, we'd have a roadmap as to how to deal with these types of issues. We might want to take a look at what's being proposed. I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee. I don't know what the Chair's position on me suggesting another meeting would be, but I do think this sounds significant enough that the Finance Committee might want to take a look.
I would agree. I would suggest, in fact, that whether the meeting, if the meeting happens on the 5th, which it sounds like that may be the date, that I can certainly be in touch with the Chair of the Finance Committee and advise that this meeting will be coming up and, to the extent that members of the Finance Committee can be here to hear the presentation, and then I would expect that it'll come up for discussion during the Finance Committee meetings.
While the 5th seems like a fair distance away between now and then...
It's really not.
I know.
It's a day after the Super Bowl.
Oh, that's fun. But you're going to have content from Analog as soon as tomorrow.
Right.
There'll be probably some more on Friday after your meetings. Can, I mean, I hope that we can get the printed communications from them in advance of the 5th, so maybe any one-to-one communications or conversations can happen to the town manager leading up to that 5th, so we're not, you know, coming in on the 5th completely green and blind.
Yeah, Bill, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I was going to say, can we get the proposal before the meeting?
Yes, my expectation is, whatever is presented or received tomorrow or this week would go in your packets on Friday.
And I think it would be beneficial for me and hopefully the rest of the board to get some input from the Finance Committee.
Yes, Ms. Casey.
And if you think of any questions or anything that you might want to get, you know, in your packets, just please email me, and I will make sure to ask it on Friday when we meet with the representatives.
Awesome. Thank you for that. We haven't, I guess, taken a vote, but I feel like it kind of materialized it in itself.
I'll make a motion that we change our February, our first meeting in February from the 12th to the 5th.
Second. Made and seconded. Any additional discussion? I feel like we've probably discussed it. All in favor of that move? That's unanimous. Again, that doesn't preclude the possibility if some urgent business does come up that we have to meet on the 12th. We call a, we call a meeting and follow the appropriate notifications. Thank you. So, that was, that memo and item six. You can go back to write, Minuteman Senior Services.
So, the next item of correspondence comes from Kelly McGee Wright. This is an annual update that's presented to the board from Minuteman Senior Services describing the value of benefits that are provided to seniors in Wilmington, in this case for fiscal '17. She notes that over 1,646 residents in Wilmington were served at a total value of $1,434,271. And then goes on to note some of the types of services that are provided, transportation, meals on wheels, nursing home screening, care management, and in-home care, amongst We have correspondence from Fios. This is with regard to some changes in fees for those who have cable through Fios. The broadcast fee will increase from $3.49 to $4.49 per month. The regional sports network fee will increase from $6.39 to $7.89 per month, and the base monthly rate for Fios bundle plans will increase by $5 per month. The base monthly rate for Fios TV and Fios internet plans will increase by $3 a month. Then further communication from Fios with regard to programming. They note that as of the 16th of January, WYCN or Channel 22 has been removed from the program lineup, apparently, as they indicate here, a provider-driven change. Then they further note that effective January 13th, the Sony Movie Channel, which is 737, and then the Sony TV Channel 1689 were removed from their lineup. We had also received, the board was provided with correspondence from Joshua Gurleff, co-chair... uh, co-chair of the Green Rainbow Party North Shore Chapter regarding House Bill Thirty-five Forty-three and Act Establishing Massachusetts Infrastructure Banks. It's my understanding that the desire here, the intent of this legislation is, uh, to provide a, um, a bank that is run or operated by the state. Um, and so Mr. Gurleff is looking for an endorsement from the Board of Selectmen. I did, uh, provide a copy of this to Pam McKenzie and asked her to take a look at it. Uh, she circulated it with her association, the Mass Collector Treasurers Association. They have a legislative committee, uh, who is looking into it, but as of this time is not taking any action or position on this, uh, legislation. Uh, then, uh, under Board to Consider, uh, we dealt with the first issue regarding the meeting. Uh, we also have, uh, a Board to Consider regarding the execution of a deed, uh, for property donated to the Conservation, uh, Commission. And this is property located off of, uh, Hopkins Street. It's actually noted as Conley Street and Staff Road, uh, also off of, um, Leonard Lane. Uh, but it's about three-quarters of a, an acre of property. Uh, it's, uh, as Valerie Gingrich notes in her memo, uh, to the Board, the Conservation Commission has approved this at their meeting in December. Uh, one of the goals of the Open Space Plan is to create preserved greenways along waterways such as Lubber's Brook, which is, uh, runs through this area, uh, for both habitat and resource protection. In addition, this parcel, uh, also offers the opportunity to link conservation areas and potentially provide, uh, for extension of trails. So, uh, it would be my recommendation that the Board, uh, authorize acceptance of this property and, uh, signatures would be required.
Valerie noted in her memo there that the Conservation Commission voted at their meeting of, on January third to accept the gift of land. Uh, I think that's worth noting as well. Um, so we certainly like free land. I would accept a motion to accept the gift of, of land.
Show me.
Seconded.
Uh, I'll take that as made and seconded by Mr. Bendel. Um, any discussion?
Thank you to the gentleman.
Indeed, always. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Very well, thank you.
Uh, next under, uh, Board to Consider is a, uh, request from the School Committee uh, to include an article on the Annual Town Meeting Warrant, uh, naming the Wilmington High School Auditorium in the memory of Joanne M. Benton.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. Um, I, I'm grateful to my counterpart at the School Committee, Steve Bjork, the chairman of that committee, uh, for, um, making this a bullet item at, uh, one of their recent, uh, school committee meetings and, and really taking this up as a discussion. And I'm, I'm pleased that, uh, by unanimous vote of the members of that committee, they all endorsed the idea of placing the request, I'm sorry, I wanna send that back down. Um, of placing the warrant article on the town meeting warrant floor, uh, for the, uh, the residents of Wilmington to consider naming the high school auditorium after Joanne Benton. Um, I, I won't read the entire letter. Uh, there will be ample opportunity for that, certainly, uh, I hope, anyway, at, uh, at town meeting. Um, but, uh, one thing that she, that is noted in here that was, uh, this is very articulately written. Uh, it states that she successfully advocated to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for a larger performance space than initially stipulated by the, the authority's funding. So, uh, what that really means is that, as many folks probably recognize, um, the MSBA, Mass School Business Authority, was picking up a good portion of the bill, close to fifty percent of the construction of our brand-new high school. Uh, and based on that, there are certain criteria and, and limitations as to, as to what they will fund. And you have to kind of build the school in their parameters generally. Um, and Ms. Benton, uh, rest her soul, uh, fought aggressively with, uh, not fought, but argued vehemently that, that the arts were so important to our community, and they are. Uh, and, uh, the MSBA acquiesced under her, under her direction and under her pressure. And the auditorium that we now enjoy, uh, and with the addition of the orchestra pit, uh, advanced space is really in its form today largely because of the effort that she put forth. And that's just the auditorium. So I, I'm, I'm arguing why it's inappropriate, uh, location within the high school and within, within our school system, uh, to have commemorated in Joanne's name. I only wish that Joanne was here, uh, to, to receive the honor, uh, but this will be, of course, a posthumous honor. So, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that you, my colleagues, will agree, uh, with this assertion and, uh, agree with me that this is a worthwhile endeavor and that it should go to the town meeting floor. And, uh, so I'd certainly open it up to any questions, concerns or emotion.
I think this is a very appropriate request and I'm happy to, uh, to support it. I, uh, no argument for me, I'll, I'll even make the motion that we, um, put an article in the town meeting for this request.
Very well. Uh, I'll accept that as a motion?
Seconded.
And seconded by Mr. Kyra is the discussion, did you, uh?
No, I, I would agree. I actually, I, I spoke to my brother, Michael, about this and he said she really championed, uh, that, um, auditorium to, for its expand, uh, its expansion. She did a lot of work over there and on behalf of the students and, uh, the residents of the town. It's, it is a worthy honor and, and naming of that, uh, the auditorium.
I look forward to going to town meeting and, and voting loudly in favor of it. Uh, so I'm sorry, we have a motion that's made and, uh, seconded to put this article in the warrant for the town meeting. All in favor of that? That's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Thank you to the School Committee as well.
Uh, next under Board to Consider is a request from the Wilmington Sons of Italy to conduct an antique and collection, uh, collector's car show, uh, at the Town Common Parking Lot on Saturday, August eighteenth, uh, nine to two. Uh, there are no, uh, conflicts or issues there. There's a letter, as you know, uh, in your packet dated January sixteenth, uh, from John Romano making this request.
Well, Sons of Italy, those guys.
Want to grant the request? I just knew someone on Sons of Italy.
I have a motion. A motion made and seconded, uh, all in favor of granting the request to the Sons of Italy for the antique car show. Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you very much. We wish the Sons of Italy well and success there.
I will be there.
Uh, next under Board to Consider, the Soul Sisters. You may recall back when we were going through the, uh, process for, uh, reservation of, uh, times for events. Uh, they were looking to conduct a road race on December first. It sounds like, uh, in light of the fact that that's the same, uh, time, um, right around, that the same time as the, um, tree lighting, they're looking to, uh, defer and, and postpone their race until, uh, December eighth. Uh, again, there's, we're not aware of any conflicts.
That doesn't throw any wrenches. Have you kind of budgeted for it irrespective of when the day was, right?
Right.
Okay. Um, so any questions or comments or a motion?
Move to grant the request?
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
Just wanna give a shout out. I think they're having a big fundraiser for ninety-nine tomorrow night, so shout out to the Soul Sisters and good luck.
Ninety-nine? Uh, thank you, Greg. Uh, all in favor? Unanimous. Awesome. Thank you. Um, new business, uh, or items not reasonably anticipated by the chairman? I'm sorry? Did you, I'm sorry, do you have?
Public comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, did I skip over eleven public comments? I did. I checked it off. Public comments. Think we already had our public comments, didn't we? I see none, so now I'll really check it off. Uh, new business, uh, items not anticipated by me forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Um, who wants to start? Anybody have any?
I just have one quick thing, uh, a request, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to the manager. If we could just, in a future meeting, uh, get an update on the New England Trans Rail situation. It's been a couple months since we've, uh, talked about that and I just don't want it to fall off the radar. So if we can get an update or if there's been any action or if there's anything we could discuss to try to, uh, gain some momentum there, it'd be great.
I, just a quick, uh, uh, we could certainly put that on a future, uh, agenda. Uh, I do, uh, stay in touch regularly with Dan Deutsch on this. Uh, he's been monitoring, uh, or his office has been monitoring the, um, us, uh, Service Transportation Board's, uh, website in terms of, um, uh, whether this issue has, is being brought forward. It hasn't to this point, but we're, we're on top of it.
If you could just keep us updated.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Kyra, anything?
Yeah, I just wanna mention, uh, as was mentioned, uh, earlier, that, uh, three of us, or four of us, or five of us, but the assistant town manager was there as well and, and the town manager and Mr. Loud and yourself were at the MMA conference in Boston. It was, uh, very informative. It was, uh, uh, enlightening, to say the least. It was the first one I've been to. A lot of networking, a lot of meeting some old friends and new, getting to, get acquainted with some new friends. And, uh, I attended, uh, several of the housing, uh, meetings that they had there. There were two of them in particular, one under the Selectmen's meeting that we all attended and we kind of divided and conquered with that and, uh, listening to some of the innovative ways of, of housing. And, and the governor's program, he has a bill that's coming out that we should look at. So, um, it was very informative and, um, I'm gonna look into more of that, uh, information that they've provided us. But it was, it was a good weekend.
Thank you. Yes, I, I'll just concur with you there. Uh, it was my ninth, uh, MMA conference, uh, and business meeting. And, uh, every time I've, I've come out of that, that weekend with something that I, I, you know, deem really quite useful, whether it's useful directly in, in the operations of the town of Wilmington or just general knowledge to have. And then later on in the future, you have either a relationship with someone that you, you, uh, you, maybe you were at a presentation that that person was delivering and you go, my God, that person was really knowledgeable in this subject area. Um, and you, you can kind of reconnect. So the networking opportunities they had to learn from experts in various fields to collaborate and just sort of, uh, shoot the bull with our counterparts from, from, uh, communities around the Commonwealth, uh, that's invaluable in and above, uh, just the content that's offered. So, uh, you know, I, I, I think it was a, um, a beneficial weekend. I look forward to diving into some of that content again and really trying to filter out and, and look for those, those jewels that we can, uh, we can apply directly here. So thank you, it was very nice to spend some, uh, some time with you gentlemen as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with both yourself and Mr. Kyra. I, I learned a lot, um, this past weekend and hope to take what I've learned to the residents of Wilmington. This is the reason why I went there. Um, and we went there to help us better this community and that's what we went there for. And I did learn a tremendous amount and I'm really glad that, um, I did talk to Mr. Shampoo about it ahead of time and asked him if it was beneficial and he agreed and I'm super glad I went. Um, at this time, I'd also like to say, um, my shout out of a veteran. We had one pass away at the end of the year. His name was Greg Lyman. He served honorably in the U.S. Navy, so I wanna thank him and his family for the time that they served, he timed it, the time he served in the, uh, U.S. Army. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Uh, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I would just like to note also, uh, we have, um, a police officer, Rafael Cruz, uh, who, uh, was deployed from Camp Curtis. Uh, I'm not sure exactly how, what his, um, deployment period will be, but just certainly, uh, offer best wishes there and, uh, safe return.
Amen. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Uh, important dates.
Uh, next Selectmen's meeting will be, uh, January twenty-ninth for the budget presentation, uh, followed by the start of the finance committee meetings on January thirtieth. The first meeting being, uh, the general overview, uh, revenues, general government, uh, followed by a meeting on February first. Uh, this one will involve planning, conservation, billing and Board of Appeals. Also, February first, uh, Dr. Ruth Potey Addiction and Adolescent Mind at Saint Thomas's Church, seven PM to eight thirty PM. Uh, February second, last day to submit petition warrant articles for, for the town warrant on May, uh, with the town meeting on May fifth. Uh, February sixth is the finance committee meeting again, uh, seven PM, public buildings and Department of Public Works. Uh, February thirteenth, uh, finance committee meeting, uh, again at seven PM, police, public safety and, uh, fire, dispatch and fire. And then February fifteenth, finance committee, uh, town hall, room nine, seven PM, town clerk, board of health, veterans services. February twenty-seventh, uh, finance committee, uh, room nine, seven PM, historical commission, IT and Board of Assessors.
Unless there's anything else, I'd accept the motion to adjourn. Made and seconded. All in favor? I think it's unanimous. Greg, did you, I mean, not Ed, I use. Very well. Thank you all and good night.